Right.
I'm going to call this council meeting to order. It is a unscheduled monthly meeting. It's actually kind of a special meeting at 6:30 on July 30th. And before we go too much further, we'll salute the flag.
(inaudible)
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 Just to start out, I should advise the public and the people watching. I've been told I have an hour, up to an hour and a half, so we're going to try to get through this this evening. The purpose of tonight's meeting is discussion of pay classification study to be undertaken by the local government, as most of us know, is LGC. And we're also here to look at some different communities. And the council has received some information as of Monday night. And my question to the council at this point is, has everybody had the opportunity to read it, digest it, so we can move forward? We do have some employees in the background. And at some point, feel free, if you raise your hands if you have questions, and we'll be glad to have you come up and speak into the mic. At this point, I'm going to ask Administrator Walowski to introduce us to the LCG, LGC individuals who are here this evening for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this evening, we have with us Donetta Haley and Barry Cox, who are with the Human Services Division of Local Government Center. And we're looking to contract with them to undertake the pay and classification study, actually mostly the pay, because we're going to be doing some classification work as it relates to the job descriptions. And to have them do the work that is necessary for us to develop the pay schedule. Just quickly, the last schedule that was completed was in 2005. And the town has put itself on a, every three years, it would be reviewed and brought back for the council's action at that point in time. So I contacted Local Government Center, and we received a proposal. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Barry and Donetta.
You'd like us to move it here?
Yeah, come on right up. Yeah, you're sure. And, yeah, Mike, can you, Councilor LeBranche, can you kind of move that over, please? Before we go, Mr. Walowski, was, when you refer back to the towns reviewing this on a every-three-year basis, was that done through a resolution?
Not that I've seen. It was, it was
More a policy?
It occurred to me that every three years, the town was committing itself to booking and reviewing the pay classification in order to ensure that, you know,
Well, market.
...the town was moving forward. Because as the, as the schedule is at the present time, we have 25 grade levels with 10 steps in each one. People are at various locales within that schedule. Some are on step three, others are on step five, others are on step 10. And when they max out at step 10, then they don't obtain any
Any increases.
Any increases. It's just maybe the cost of living.
The collar, right, okay. Thank you for that. And we'll turn it over to you folks.
Well, back in May, your town administrator asked me to submit a proposal to do the pay and class study. So the first proposal I submitted on May 2nd was sort of the full-blown pay and class study, similar to what the LGC has done in the past. The last one we did for you was in 2005, although we have some new procedures that were included in that proposal in May. And then, I think it was the end of June, Donetta met with Ed and some department heads to discuss the proposal. And we realized that what, what they were looking for was something scaled back from that original proposal in May. So I submitted a revised proposal on July 22nd. And I think that's what they have copies of. I should just alert you that I submitted a revised version of the revised version to Ed tonight, because we discovered that the numbering was not correct in that original one. So he had, he has the new signed copies of that. But basically, the difference is, and I explained in the cover letter, to add that with, with that revised proposal, that the estimated cost was going to be about $5,300, which was $3,200 less than the original proposal that I submitted in May, because you were no longer asking us to redo the job descriptions and do the labor grade and wage schedule. Really, what you were asking us to do was the comparative pay data.
Right.
And from the meeting that Donetta had on June 30th, there seemed to be a preference displayed for using the same eight communities that we used in the original pay data. And so that's what our proposal suggests. But that's, I gather that's something you wanted to discuss.
Yeah. You're saying that you had made a proposal prior in the past of eight communities, and are we not using those same eight communities? Is that what you're saying?
No. We're using the same eight communities that were, that were utilized in the 2005 study.
Okay.
And that's what we're looking at with the, the discussion that Donetta had when she was here with all the department heads, was that we wanted to retain the same eight communities that were utilized in the last study.
Okay.
And that what we want to do is look at a market study as to what people are getting paid within comparable positions in other communities within the eight communities that were selected and their positions.
Okay.
And what this study would yield in terms of comparative pay data is, for each position that we study, there would be an average minimum, an average maximum, and then a midpoint.
Right.
And that would become the basis, I presume, for developing pay ranges for each position
Eliminate the steps.
Instead of the steps in the labor.
Counselor Quox has a question for you.
From what Mr. Quox said, we got May 2nd a proposal, a full-blown proposal, that none of us had any inclination that was even finished, that we did not get a chance to look at. And then at the end of June, a scaled-back version, and July 22nd, a revision, revised, I guess at the direction of the town administrator?
If I may, the, correct. And, and the, the revision that has occurred at the present time is that we felt that within the departments, we would take care of the job descriptions. It's easier for us to, to deal with the job descriptions as opposed to providing to the LGC what all the different individuals do within the different positions. We can handle that. You know, you put it on a word processing, you have the conversation with the department heads, with the employees as to what their roles and responsibilities are, and you revise that job description. We don't, you know, we didn't feel it was necessary to have them do it. So there was, that, that was that issue that was sort of pulled out of there. And, and the, the change was, was that from the discussion that we had, I guess it was about two weeks ago now, was that we were looking to rather going from a grade step to a market study. And so that's the revision.
I, I know as a counselor up here, I mean, the reason we're having this, and part of it was at my request, that, that we would be able to participate and to go from what we had, and now you're changing the entire format, which will probably be explained and might be similar. But we did discuss that we were going to look into the eight communities that were used last time and see if they were indeed compatible for this, this time. I don't believe the council directed LGC to use the same eight. We wanted information so that we could determine as a council which communities we would use as a comparison.
It, again, nothing prohibits the council, in this discussion here, from determining that they want to use other communities. I'm saying that the department heads in our discussion wanted to retain the eight communities that were part of the 2005 study as the basis for developing the pay scale. If the council feels they want to do something else, I mean, that was the purpose of having these folks here this evening. The contract is still the same. It was going to be a discussion with the council and a discussion with the department heads as to how we were going to be moving forward on it. If the council feels they want to do something different, and that's the council's prerogative. And hopefully, we have that discussion amongst the department heads and the council in order to come to that. You know, maybe this evening results in a totally different scenario, and we have some further discussion about it and move forward from there. So it's not, nothing's cast in stone, nothing's ingranted at this point. It's still fluid.
I think it was a starting point.
Correct.
You have to start somewhere. So that's where it was, I believe. Counselor?
But I, I was still under the impression that the reason for this meeting was for us to decide what communities we would use and then go forward, instead of doing all this work and then changing the communities. That, to me, is a waste of time and effort, and probably money as well.
Okay, your point's well taken.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor LeBranche?
I'm not sure who is best suited to answer this question. Is it the administrator or someone from LGC or a department head? But I, I guess to, to help understand the process a little bit better, how did we get to the eight towns or cities that we compared ourselves to? Who figured that those were the best comparisons for us? And I understand that probably a lot of it has to do with the fact that they have the same types of departments and, and job descriptions and things of that nature. But, you know, what was the driving force behind selecting these communities as opposed to, for example, Epping's not on there?
You can't look at me for that.
Okay.
Well, actually, yes, I think you can, because you and I had that discussion just recently the other day. And if you want to articulate it, fine. If you don't, I
I mean, if a department head would like to speak to it, I, that's
No. I mean, I looked at, at the way, the reason that the, the community selected these communities was because they're geographically within, you know, our workforce area in the first instance. Many of the communities have same or similar employees, functions, and departments. So that's another one. And I forget what the third one was that I had. I had, I had a third one down there. And, you know, it's, it's an area that we would likely lose employees to, to those communities as opposed to someone in Concord
Or Bow.
Or farther north or farther west of us. I mean, it's, it's those types of communities, you know, the cost of living is different in the seacoast than it is in Concord, New Hampshire, or in Keene. So, you know, I can see why the community, New Market, selected at that point in time these, these communities right here to be looked at.
And that was the question I basically asked the other day, and that's the answer I got. And I looked at it and said, yeah, it does kind of make sense. Because if we, the council, myself being on here the longest probably, along with Counselor Walowski, in the past, oh, no, Counselor LeBranche, you were here at the last one, that the previous administration was using Bow, New Hampshire, and all these other communities way out. And we, a lot of us felt that geographically or economically, they were not similar to what we were facing here in the seacoast as far as cost of living and things, and, you know, similarities of jobs and everything else. So I quite was happy to see that these communities were more in our area, more inclusive to what we are going through as a community in the seacoast area.
Right. And can I just?
Sure. Go ahead.
You know, I came in at the tail end of the last study in '05. And I do believe that we are matching up town for town, city for city with the '05 book. So, I mean, we, it, '05, we weren't including Bow or any other towns. We were including the eight that are presently being propositioned to us, I guess is probably the best way to put it.
On this particular scenario, yes. But in the past, the administrator had used various other things he wanted to get through and say, well, we're similar to this in this community way up here. And I believe some of the staff people might remember some of those conversations we've had in the past, when the previous administrator would say, well, I think we should use this town, or we should use this town. But well pointed, well taken. Anybody else have a question before I go back to Counselor Quox, according to Robert's Rules of Order? Counselor Walowski?
Is there a reason why there's eight communities if we decided to include a ninth community?
That's, that's a good question. I, I think historically, the pay class studies have always been eight. But we really have the capability of doing more than that. You could do 10 or 12, or you could add communities to this, or change the communities. That's, that's a possibility.
Counselor LeBranche mentioned Epping, and I think Epping is a good local community that we should also consider along with these eight. That's why I asked the question of possibly increasing.
We've worked, oh, I apologize. We've worked with as few, at least I have worked with as few as six or seven, and then as many as, I think, one study I worked with a dozen. So there is flexibility there.
And one other question on that. If we did add, let's say, one more community, making it nine, would that affect the, the cost and how much?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Rest you. Okay. Counselor Quox?
Well, in, in using what they had, I'm sure it hasn't changed all too much. When you used Dover, for instance, the population in New Market is around 8,000, and the population in Dover is 28,000. The housing units in New Market are 3,457, and the housing units in Dover, 12,530. And the land area is probably four times the amount. So if you have four times the amount of land area, four times the amount of population, almost four times the amount of housing, what it takes to run that infrastructure, I don't see how that is a good comparison for us to use Dover as compared to New Market. And the same holds for Rochester. When you look at the numbers for population, housing units, and so forth and so on, they have a much, much greater population than we do. Larger infrastructure, more roads to take care of, more of everything. So to use those two, which, which are in here, just for the stock for Dover and Rochester, they really shouldn't be used at all.
It is your recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, look, if you, if you look at the stats, and if, if this pay scale classification is supposed to be used for us as a tool to study other towns that are comparable to New Market in regards to pay scale, then we have to make sure that the jobs they're doing are the same. Of course, all towns have to do their water and their roads and their fire and police and so forth. But to what extent? How much more do they have to do because their population is so much higher, they have so many extra housing units? So therefore, to compare us to them for our pay scale, when those people have that much more to do and more responsibilities, I don't think is, is what we should be doing. And that goes for several towns. Seabrook's one of them as well, because of their summer population. And that's three right off the top. I won't go into more detail, but let's continue. I yield the floor.
Counselor LeBranche? LeBranche?
All right.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
I, I understand what Counselor Quox is saying. However, I think what you've got to take a look at, as far as the big picture's concerned, is you have a city like Dover that they perhaps have 40 truck drivers on DPW, where New Market is, is a community that might have eight, five, okay? But the job is still the same. And, and the requirements, you know, the, the licensing, you know, all, all of the requirements for that job is still the same. Same when you're dealing with the police force. You take a look at, at a Rochester or a Dover, and, you know, they have several lieutenants, I'm sure, several captains. I mean, our force, you know, they probably have as many captains and lieutenants as we have the whole force. So, you know, it is to some extent logical to use those communities, because, yeah, they've got more area, they've got more, more revenues, which are important, but they also have more employees that they're, that they're paying. And the town in New Market is paying less, and we're just trying to maintain and retain what we have. And I think that's the way that I look at it.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I'm just going to interject, because both of what you said makes sense. But I'm thinking, the way I'm seeing Dover and Rochester is that it was probably taking the high and taking the low and kind of merging them together on the scale of the spectrum as opposed to going to all same-sized towns, but some of the highs, some of the lows. And that's just my speculation. And Counselor Walowski?
Well, I basically, Counselor LeBranche said pretty much what I was going to. We're not doing a study on staffing. We're doing a study on pay scales. And the types of communities that all of these are, are similar enough that I think they do make a good comparison. If we were doing a staffing study, I would tendly, definitely agree that, yes, the size of the community, the amount of housing, makes a major difference. But for a pay scale, we get an employee here who is getting considerably less than they would get at the same level in Dover, might be an employee that says, I'm going to Dover. But if we can look at a community that they may be going to, if they're not happy here with their pay, it's a good comparison. That's why I feel that these communities are, are accurate.
Okay. I'm going to let Counselor Bergeron, but we have to move on. These folks are here. So unless there's something new that somebody wants to add, because I want to give everybody a chance to talk. Counselor Bergeron?
I, too, agree with both, both mics, actually, both Counselors Michael Walowski and LeBranche. Physical size of the community, you know, is still, a position is a position, doing a, a job. So physical size of the community isn't necessarily a determining factor. However, I was wondering if either Barry or Donetta could also give us some advice in this area. They are the experts.
Yeah, and that's where I want to head next. But are you all set?
Yes.
Then I'll let Counselor Quox.
That might be true in regards to staffing, like Counselor LeBranche mentioned, you know, you have extra trucks, and you have extra this, and you have extra foreman or whatever you call it, saying public works. But then when you get to the department heads, they have the responsibility of seeing to everything, and that falls, I believe, into the grade step. So therefore, their pay scale in a smaller community like ours, that doesn't have as many people to, to handle, would be quite different. But we're going to compare their salaries to someone who is handling three and four times many, as many employees as we are. So that's where I see a difference, more, would probably be more with department heads because of who they're overseeing as compared to just the staff.
Something new?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Walowski? And then we're moving on, folks.
Can I safely assume that an employee, a supervisor who supervises sizes 50 employees would be a different grade than a supervisor who supervises 10 employees?
I think we're getting off track here. What we're talking about specifically right now is the towns.
The towns.
And I think that's going to come into play at a, later on in the conversation. So before we move further
This, I feel, is what Counselor Quox is bringing up, and myself, is pertinent to deciding on what towns. That's why this discussion is being had at this point.
Well, it's, it's an interesting question. The difficulty I'll have answering it is that my expectation was in our revised proposal that we weren't doing labor grades and
Correct. That's right. We're getting away from
So the individual position a department head would have probably its own pay range.
And that's why I was leaning out towards that, Counsel Walowski. I probably wasn't very clear with you on that one, but that's where I was going, leaning out of that, because that's, that was the issue.
That, that gave me the answer I needed. Thank you.
Before we go any further, does anybody want to add another town or delete a town? This is the point where I think I would detain that before we go further in and then come back to this discussion. I think we probably should make that determination at this point. Does that sound? Okay, Counselor Walowski?
I would like to add the town of Epping to the current eight towns.
Do we want to take that as a motion or just a suggestion?
I'll make that as, as a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Counselor LeBranche? I'll get it right.
I'm just curious if we're going to be able to compare the, the various positions that we have in New Market with Epping, because from what I understand, for example, Epping has like a road agent, but they might only have two or three people that actually work on, on DPW, if that's what you want to call it. So are we going to be able to, or Water Department, you know, are we going to be able to successfully compare, or are there going to not be some positions that we can compare Epping with New Market to?
It is possible that there might be positions that don't, well, one of the things that we encounter when we do this, and it's really an advantage perhaps to adding some communities and having more than just, you know, eight, is that occasionally, there won't be a comparable position in enough of those other communities to give you a statistically significant sample of pay, in which case, we then have to, what we typically do on our own is find alternative communities so that we get a significant statistical sample. We'll tell you what those communities are, which ones we use for which positions, that we'll, we'll use the base, the base communities you give us as much as possible, but very often, we have to sort of cast a wider net and get information from other communities.
Follow-up?
Yes. If, if we do use a, a community like Epping, and there are, are positions that don't match, does, do you just basically throw Epping out of that mix? Or, I guess my question is, you know, I, I'm in favor of using Epping if it's going to help us get some, some better numbers. But if it's going to throw off the equation
I think adding a community probably ends up giving you a little better numbers, Frank.
So even though they may not have the position
But if there's a position that it doesn't apply to, we're not, there's
Then you just forget it for that one line.
Pass on them.
Okay.
And hopefully, there's enough in the other communities to give you a statistically significant sample.
Okay, thank you.
And that can happen in any community, whether it be Epping or not.
Yes.
But I do, I, I, I work in Epping, so I understand, Mr. Walowski, correct me if I'm wrong, that the Epping has a, kind of contracts a lot of their road services out, you know, versus where we do it here in the house, so to speak. So that would be one of those things that would probably happen.
And Chief Sears?
Just for a piece of historical significance, because I've been through every one of these places.
Are you slowly walking towards the mic?
These eight communities came, this list came from the LGC the last time we did this.
Okay.
They picked the communities based upon the job descriptions the town provided. We, as a department head, thought they did a good job.
Okay.
That's why we stuck with the, with the towns that they, they had picked the last one. And it was based upon job descriptions. And I don't know who these two people were, the ones that worked on the town.
I'm glad you said that, because that was in the back of my mind, because somebody asked the question, how do we get with the same people? And the only thing I could think of was, it was a recommendation by the staff, so chances are that the staff was happy with the previous study, so they decided to stick with the same surrounding communities. However, I, I think it's a great idea that we add other communities to this, so we get a broader picture of what we're up. And we have a motion on the table, and is this something to discussion, or is it, because I'd like to move the motion along.
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I see none. Mr. Walowski, roll call, please.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Bergeron?
Aye.
Counselor LeBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Walowski?
Aye.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye. Motion passes. We'll add Epping to that list, please. Counselor Walowski?
I'm done for now.
You're fine. Counselor Quox?
A, a quick question to the people here tonight. Do you use town evaluations, the value of the town, in, in any of your calculations?
My tax rate?
The comparable total assessments of the town.
I think sometimes we do in, in recommending communities to use as comparables, but I, I, I wasn't here when these original ones were picked, so I don't know the background to that.
And also, to refer to what Chief Sears said, it states in the LGC application last time, that we did it 2005, that the eight communities was selected by the town, not by LGC. So
Yeah, I think, I think it does say that in the study, and I don't know
It does, it does say in the study that the town selected those eight communities last time by LGC. And I'd, I'd like to make a motion to, we just did Epping, because when, when you look at these, I'd like to make a motion to include Kingston, Greenland, Nottingham, and Newington, and Oment, Rochester, and Dover. Because when you look at the values of what we're using, if we're using, we have Hampton down here, I believe. Hampton's town valuation is $2 billion, where New Market's valuation is $714 million. The same goes with, I don't know where Rochester is, but some of these towns are in the billions, and they're using those as comparisons for our town, which is valued, for the total value, the town valuation at only $714 million. So if they use that in their calculations for their study, then that is something we should take into consideration as well.
Counselor A counselor? You're not a counselor.
Well, be one for the moment. Thank you. I don't think that communities, because they may have $1 billion in assessed value, are going to be paying an employee hundreds of thousands of dollars more. They're going to be paying them based upon, you know, what the, what the prevailing rate is. I'm, I'm sure that practically every single community in the state of New Hampshire does a study, whether they're using the Local Government Center or Primex or somebody else to, to undertake that. And I think that what we're looking at is comparable jobs. And I don't know what, you know, whether or not the know, whether or not the, the communities that you, that you mentioned would have similar to, they may have some positions that are similar to, but others not. And it's also, I mean, one of the things you, you brought up earlier was the size of the community. If, if you're beginning to start looking at communities that are smaller than New Market, what you're doing is you're beginning to look at a, a, you know, potentially different pay scales. I don't know where they are, but I think that what we try to do, the best thing to do, having done some market studies, is you're looking at a range of, of population. So that way, when you, when you do your averages and, and everything, you, you're coming out with sort of a, an even keel across the board. And, and, and that's what you should be trying to do, is, as opposed to skew it potentially in a lower or a higher. You want, you want that range to be there. I mean, Mr. Cox talked about a statistical, you know, you don't want to skew the statistics one way or the other. You want to try to be as fair as possible across the board. It gives you the best results.
I think we have right now a motion on the table. That motion was to eliminate Rochester and Dover, and to add what communities?
Kingston, you know, you have Greenland, Nottingham, and Newington. And if you look at the comparisons on the stats by zip code, they're all similar.
Okay.
Basically, in size and everything else.
Would you be opposed to doing two motions? One, to remove Dover and Rochester, and second to that?
So moved.
To add a, second motion to add those other communities? Okay. Ms. Benvenuti, I can't take that right now, because we're in the motion process. I need a second on this motion, to remove, right now Dover and Rochester?
Is it possible for us to comment, or are we...
Yes, it is.
It is.
Well, yeah, okay. Because that's why you're here.
Yes, timing, though I, I wasn't sure if I was interrupting. I would be very cautious about taking those out. You're, you're talking, your, your market area. And what Ed and Barry were saying is true. These balance out oftentimes. And if we are surveying a position, and we see a very high salary, we often knock that out. Again, if we see a very low one, we will knock that low out. Sometimes we have a high and a low, and they balance. But if we see something that is way, way out of whack, we take it out.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think if you put those other four in, and you take Rochester and Dover out, I think you're, you're playing with your market area. I don't know if they take your people or not. I mean, if you lose employees, do you typically lose them to Kingston and Greenland and Newington? I think you need to take that into consideration. May, maybe you do.
Okay. Thank you for that advice. We should, we have a motion on the, on the table, it has not been seconded by anyone?
I'll second that, for purposes of discussion.
We have a second on that discussion? Go ahead.
I think taking Dover and Rochester out, and I believe that is the current motion on the floor right now, is not a good idea, because as well as these on the 2005 study, being the core group, that we also have something to compare it against. We can take Dover, or Rochester, or any of the other eights, eight cities that are on there, and we can look back at the 2005 study and compare them, and to see where they have grown. And I, I wholeheartedly don't think we should remove those two.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Quox?
If, if this is a pay scale study, then I don't know why we, we would be concerned. What, what is the rationale between being concerned if someone leaves us, where they're going to go to? They could either go to Dover, or they could go to Raymond. I mean, they're going to go wherever they can find another job, if they decide to leave us. And I don't think, being that close to us has, everyone wants to stay closer to home now, because of the gas, but they're going to go where they get the best offers. So I don't know why we would consider the geographic area of these towns to be significant as to not to drop them. I don't think that falls into the criteria of a surefire decision.
And correct me if I'm wrong here, but with my understanding, or it always has been, that part of the reason for a pay study, and this one as well, is to attract and retain people.
Correct.
Your best.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Exactly. You all set? Counselor LaBranche?
Just going through the figures that were given to us earlier, and adding Epping to the mix, I believe Epping's population is still a little bit less than New Market. I may be wrong.
Five, four, seven, six.
So, I mean, Epping is, is lower, Stratum is lower, Seabrook is lower, Northampton is lower, Durham is lower. So out of the nine communities, we've got five that, you know, are on a, at least a halftime basis, because Durham jumps up in the fall. We've got five of the communities that are, are less populated than New Market. So I, I think, you know, understandably, we've got Dover in there, which is, you know, three times the population, and we've got Rochester, that's three times. We've got Exeter, that's just a little bit over. You know, I, I really do believe the comparison is good, and, you know, I, I'm concerned, obviously, you know, it's nice to see familiar faces, working on the town crew, working on the police department, working in Town Hall. And, and I agree that that's what I think this study is all about, to try to continue to keep the people that we have working for us, at a competitive wa, rate. Not that they're getting overpaid or underpaid, competitive. And I think that's what the whole purpose of this study is.
I would... All set?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor, Vice Chair Carr?
I was going to say that I think the competitive nature of the job situation in all of these towns is, is the whole point that we're doing this exercise. And I think it's wonderful to include more, but I think to exclude anybody, at this point, when the people who do this as a living have told us, these are good towns to use. They, they obviously know more about it than we do, so...
And I'm going to allow, I don't see any more lights. Mrs. Benvenuti? And thank you for being patient.
Oh, I just wanted, it's just statistical, factual numbers that I happen to be sitting with. Out of the 234 communities in the state of New Market is the, is the 30th largest community in the state. And the population is 9,400 in New Market. The population of Epping is, as Mike said, just a little over 6,000. Kingston, 6,100, Greenland, 3,300, Nottingham, 4,400, and Newington, 795. So I just, just wanted to give you the information.
Thank you for sharing that. I see no more lights. The motion is to remove from the current list Dover and Rochester. No further discussion. Let's move this to a vote. Mr. Chair, Mr. Winowski? Roll call?
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Burgeur?
Nay.
Counselor LaBranche?
Nay.
Counselor Poloski?
Nay.
Counselor Minutelli?
Nay.
Counselor Carr?
Nay.
Chairman Glennon?
Nay.
Motion fails. Would you like to make your second motion to add communities? I think it was Kingston, Greenland, Nottingham, and I didn't get the fourth one.
Doing it.
Waiting for a motion, if anybody wants to do one.
I'll ask to add Newington.
Okay.
And Nottingham.
Anybody want to, that's in the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Anybody want to do a second on that, or a friendly addition to that, at this point? There's no second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that? I see none. Mr. Winowski, roll call, please.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Burgeur?
Nay.
Counselor LaBranche?
Nay.
Counselor Poloski?
Nay.
Counselor Minutelli?
Nay.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay. Now, at this point, I would like you folks, for what you really came here, well, I mean, great discussion, but I, I think you have a presentation you want to do, so that, I'm not sure if that's what it is.
I don't think we did.
Oh, okay. See, I thought you were coming with a presentation, and we just cut you off, and, you know, at that point. Okay, let's go back here. Does the council have any discussion on dropping the step in grade and going to the fair market, is that what you call it, fair market analysis?
Yes.
Okay. And before we go there, I guess I would ask LGC to give us some pros and cons about it, if you have any?
I think it's a good idea to have a range, rather than have steps. With steps, oftentimes employees show up for work, they get that step. You could have one person just walking in the door every day, you could have somebody else, you know, working their heart out. And I think if you have a range, and I believe, Ed, we talked about possibly at some point in the, in the near future, instituting a merit system for raises.
Correct. Well, we have performance review.
Right.
So, in that space.
And sort of tie that in.
Right.
But I think, I think it's, it's a, it's a good idea to have a range, rather than a guaranteed step.
And do you see this across the...
I'm, I'm seeing a lot more of it.
A lot more of it happening.
And Barry?
Yeah, I, I think, I think probably if you were to poll the 234 communities today, more probably have labor grades and steps, because that was a traditional thing to do. But there are a lot of other, you know, the ranges is certainly another alternative that more places are going to.
Do you see any downside? I mean, anything you really notice, what sticks out? Okay. I'll take that.
I don't really see any downside. I prefer it.
I think it's just, I don't necessarily prefer it, but I think it's, it's a legitimate alternative.
Okay. Counselor LaBranche?
How difficult is it to implement this, you know, going from a step in grade to this process? You know, what's the logistics of it, I guess, is my question?
I don't think it's particularly, I don't think there is any particular...
There's, there's not any real effect for the employee, or for the, for the town during the transition period from, from...
I mean, when you have labor grades and steps, you have sort of the equivalent of a, a range, but rather than it being a range for a position, it's a range for a grade, and in that grade, there might be several positions. This, this will be more precise in a way, and finely tuned, because it'll relate, each individual position will have its own range.
So, so this is a pretty smooth transition, and you would...
Well, yeah, because we won't be recommending where you put individual people in the range. That's a call you have to make, based on their qualifications, education, their performance, and so on.
So does the administrator see a smooth transition on this?
Well, I, you know, in the, the job that I came from, we had a range. We, we went from, you know, steps and grades, or grades and steps, I should say, to a market analysis, and created that range. And, and the beauty of it was that, A, we were looking at individual positions, you know, whether it be a police officer, a DPW guy, the planning board secretary. We're looking at what the range was, and, and the selectmen also looked at it, as to where does the town fall within the, the communities that we compared? And their goal was, they wanted, you know, the, the individuals to be in the middle. And what we found was, we were in the middle, except for, I think, about two or three positions. And, and the, the result was so glaring to them, because we had people that were so far behind, they made a commitment, they said, okay, then in the next two years, we're going to get this person to the middle. And then, on a yearly basis, they determined what that pay increase was going to get, that the employees would get, and it, it just rolled into it. It was much easier to administer. You know, there were some people who had that, I don't know what grade and step I'm on. You're on a pay scale. And it, the, the other beauty of it is because of the range that we had, we had a 25% lower and higher, we could bring in people who came in, and we weren't bumping up against others that had maybe, that we had hired. We also, there was sort of a, not, there wasn't a bottoming out, once you got to grade a step 10, because you had so much room to be able to move, that nobody ever bottomed out. And that was a good part, if you, if you kept that for three years, and somebody was on a step nine, then they were a step 10 in the third year, it's like, oh, all I get is a cost of living. There is always that movement, and it was an incentive for a lot of people. After a while, they, they realized it was a really good, a really good way to, to, to administer it.
So you have been through one of these...
Twice.
Transition, two, two times. Just as a follow-up, I'm understanding that police department is union. How does that work into the equation? Changing things around, I mean, the contract's a contract, regardless of how...
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on it, that's all.
And that is more negotiable than it is policy set in, in stone?
It's correct.
Yeah, okay. Did you want to talk again?
No. No, I, I just wanted to respond to having been through the process.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, at this point, I think, and I'm not clear on this, I didn't get any definitive answer. The administrator is recommending, with the support of the staff, to go from a step in grade to, through, to a market analysis. At this point, I'm not sure if this is an administrative decision that can be made on the administrative side solely, or if this is something that actually has to be approved by the council for that purpose. And I would imagine if it's going to have some type of impact to the budget, I'm wondering where it comes. Do you have any insight on that? Because I have not had a chance to get a legal opinion on that today.
No.
Okay. So, at this point, I think perhaps in our discussion this evening would be to, you know, hear what they have to say, go with the suggestion of the folks here. And also, what we just did was to add a couple of communities to the, the process of doing that equation. We added one. That's right, we didn't add the others, did we? Because it fails, okay. Uh, let me see, we have a couple of lights. Counselor Poloski?
I'd like to make a motion that, upon the recommendation of the department heads and the town administrator, that the town in New Market moves from a grade and step pay system to a, I'm blinking on the words, help. Market analysis system of wage.
Okay, my only concern there is, would you, somebody needs to add a friendly amendment upon legal review, to who actually has that authority? Because if we're making it, we don't have that authority, and it is an administrative authority, and we don't want to be superseding something he's responsible for. Go ahead.
If, if I may, when, when Donetta, Donetta was here a couple of weeks ago, we talked a little bit about that, and, and it's not difficult to take the, the analysis and fit it into a grade and step. Am I correct on that? It's just, it's the determination of what would be the, the increases between the steps. So it's, it's something that I, you know, I mean, you could say theoretically, we're going to get rid of the grades and steps, and I still have that range. The problem is, is that the way that the system is set up under the graded step, is you have, you know, you might have, you know, for lack of term, the police chief, the librarian, and, you know, the wastewater two operator. Well, what characteristics do those three people have that you would put them on that step? This way, we're still getting back to the fact that we have individual positions that we're looking at, as to what the pay is for them out there, and which I think is more important. We could still do it, we might have 43, you know, grades, but we're still looking at the same, same issues that we have, so I...
So we're really not dropping the step in grade?
Yeah.
We are.
We're going to be paying by position. That's what, that's, that's what the, the market analysis will be. It's, it's a position-based analysis.
Yeah, I think to clarify, the, the market analysis is the data that we're collecting.
Correct.
But what you're really changing, I think, is going from a labor grade step system to a pay range system. And this pay range is maybe the phrase you should be...
By position.
Thinking about by, by position. And one, incidentally, one of the advantages of, of that is that it gives you much greater And incidentally, one of the advantages of that is that it gives you much greater latitude in terms of how you move people and how much you move people. Whereas with the step system, you're sort of locked into, well, they're either at step 5 or step 6. But with the range, you have much more latitude.
A lot more flexibility on that, yeah.
A lot more flexibility.
Yeah. Counselor LaBranche?
I'm wondering if this is a decision that can wait till possibly the business meeting to work on, and, you know, not only if we as a council have questions that we'd like to ask the administrator, the chair, or whoever, or if, you know, department heads want to talk to councilors about it, or if employees want to. It just gives everybody a chance to digest it, get some feeling for it. I mean, I just, you know, found out about this myself, like, within the last 48 hours. You know, and I think it's a big decision to make. You know, I'm leaning towards the administrator's suggestion, and also hearing from LGC that they also kind of think that's not a bad idea. But to give us a chance to digest it and possibly do this at the business meeting, I'm just requesting that, I guess.
Yeah. Counselor Poloski, would you be willing to pull your motion?
On that note, I will rescind my motion.
And Mr. Minutelli?
Rescind.
Rescind. Thank you. What, thank you, Counselor LaBranche. And Counselor Quox?
I agree with Mike, and that's similar to what I was going to ask because I would like a chance to go over the May 2nd proposal, the July 22 revision that has the grade steps, if that can be made available to the councilors to read to help them make that decision.
Any other councilors want that information? Would you please provide that for Counselor Quox?
Absolutely.
And Ash, there, for a copy too, please. At this point, do we want to do a straw vote to where we are in support of this? So we can send a very clear message?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. All those in favor of the original motion that Counselor Poloski made and seconded by Counselor Minutelli, if you're in favor of that, please raise your right hand. Okay. Was yours up?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be a 6 to?
It was.
I just wanted to get some more information on it before I just even do a yes to a straw vote.
Okay. So, I see a light on. Counselor Poloski, which just hit you in the head. I have no idea why it went.
Point that Chairman Glennon made, who has the authority to make that change? I'd like to ask Administrator Wanowski if he could check with legal to see?
Absolutely.
Whose authority is, whether it's yours or whether it's council's.
I will.
That was a given. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to contribute in the discussion? Just remember, Counselor LaBranche, it's almost an hour here. Just kidding. Please, go ahead.
I guess, you know, we're talking a lot about wages and salaries, but where do the benefits play into this, you know, as a comparison of, you know, benefits that Newmarket may offer as opposed to another community? Because regardless of if it's, you know, in dollars and cents when you get your paycheck, or if it's a benefit that you're getting, I mean, it's still income, for lack of a better term, I guess. So, does part of this study include, or is there a study available that compares the benefits that Newmarket has to offer with the benefits that Dover, Durham, Exeter, Hampton have to offer?
Well, we did touch upon that when I was here. And typically, we do include a benefit study of each community. I think we talked about it, and you were very happy with the benefit package. You had no complaints about it at all. So that was sort of off the table, but if you want to further discuss that, that is, you have a session.
You know, I guess I'm just saying, for example, if town A is paying 80% of health insurance and town B is paying 60%, you know, there's a little added benefit for town A. So, you know, is town A paying as much as town B for a truck driver job or a laborer or a groundskeeper, something like that? You know, there is some benefits to that. That's why they call it a benefit package, I guess. But I think that that's, from my perspective, it's important to know what the benefits cost the town overall also.
It can be very difficult to tie that into wages, from my experience. I don't know if you agree, Barry, with all your?
It is, it can be tricky to get a picture of a total compensation including benefits, but it is also true that with many paying classification studies, we, in addition to doing pay analysis, we also do a benefit analysis. It doesn't look to me like we did that for Newmarket.
No, that's why I was asking the question because, you know, how many weeks vacation do they get? You know, what's, is dental included? You know, other things like that. I mean, even though there may not be a dollar figure attached, at least we know we're competitive in that aspect of it also.
It wouldn't be difficult to add a benefit analysis. With the same communities that you selected for the pay analysis, we could do the same thing with benefits.
You all set?
Yes.
Traditionally, by previous employments that I've been in, in hiring staff and everything, usually you have a salary base, and then you usually tack on 0.35%, probably 3.5 now, as an additional cost for the benefit portion of that. So are you looking for a dollar amount? Are you looking for comparability? Like, we give two weeks, they give two weeks, they give, you know, health insurance?
The whole process is to be competitive and not to lose our help to, you know, the town of Hampton or something like that. So, you know, I think that, you know, wages, obviously, is what's on everyone's mind. That's what it is, what they get at the end of the week. But, you know, how do we compare benefit-wise also?
I think that's a great idea. I really, I hadn't even thought about that. I think it's a great idea. Is that an additional cost, by the way?
Right, it's a proposal on that?
Yeah, proposal on that, or is that going to be included in this?
Might be the $3,000.
I'll let Donetta give you a dope slap for saying this, but I think we could simply add the benefit analysis at no additional cost.
Oh, great.
Just include that.
Wonderful, yeah.
Thank you, folks. And Mr. Bergeron?
Just to reiterate what Counselor LaBranche said, I think that you're only looking at half of the picture if you're only looking at wages.
Yeah.
Obviously, the benefits are a very important part of your employment as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that would absolutely be a requirement.
I'd like to take that as a motion, if somebody would make that, that we include that in the?
Take a motion to include benefit comparison with the communities that we're being compared to on the wage study?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that? Counselor Quox?
Do you mean benefits?
Counselor.
Counsel Quox, Counselor LaBranche. Do you mean basically, maybe they should take a look at our personal policies manual and see what they get for incentive pay, carrying over sick days, as a co-package? Everything's in here, right?
Yeah, at least as I'm hearing it, we're talking about all benefits that the town would provide. The medical, dental.
Vacation.
We're talking, well, vacation, longevity.
Vacation, simply longevity. So everything that's in here?
Long-term, short-term disability, so everything that's in that compared to what other communities are doing.
That would be included.
Anything that in theory has a dollar value attached to it, even though you won't be giving us the dollar value.
Yeah.
Anything that would have a dollar value attached to it, I guess, would be what I'd be looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. Was that what you?
Yeah.
We have that motion on the floor. Discussion's over. I assume there's no more lights. Roll call, please.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Bergeron?
Aye.
Counselor LaBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Posky?
Aye.
Counselor Minutelli?
Aye.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I would like to ask any of the town employees if they would like to ask questions, contribute anything, or have any concerns. Mr. Sears? I don't know if you heard what I said, but I know you were talking, but I'm just, did you have anything you want to? Okay, great. I didn't know if you heard me, that's why. Nobody else?
I just, one thought, I know you're probably tired of getting revised proposals and contracts, but really, I should probably give you a new one that includes the additional community and the benefit analysis piece.
Have a seat, please.
Thank you.
And I guess my final question, now that you said that, is two things, one actually. I want to ensure the town employees who are listening this evening that upon my discussion with the town administrator on this, one of my biggest concerns was if the town is going to undertake writing the job descriptions to match, which is what you're saying, right? That will the employees have an opportunity, and I'm talking to people, I'm going to just use as an example, DPW people who may be working out in the grounds and maybe building people, you know, the people upstairs in the finance department, that everybody will have an opportunity to give input into that job description writing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to go on the record that if you're not asked, check with your supervisor. If that's not the profit issue you want, then you have the administrator to go to. But please do not come to the council, and gee, you've gone through protocols. And my final one was, is it customary to pull out of the equation of what you're doing, the job descriptions? Do you see other communities doing that? Or are they kind of leaning towards having someone as such as LGC writing those job descriptions?
I think what you're doing is a little unique, but we would need their job descriptions to be sure that we're comparing apples to apples when we look at the positions in the other communities. So it is an important piece of it.
It is an important piece of it.
Yeah, and if you'll just excuse me, Barry, when we did the first study for Newmarket, which was a long time ago, first and second, I think, we did the job descriptions. And I think they just kept revising them from our model. So we actually did the originals.
And how long ago was that?
Oh, gosh. We had a lot of Newmarket in the computer. I know we did one in 2002, but I think we did a study before 2002.
That's largely why you're saving the $3,000.
As I say?
Because you're doing that piece for it.
How long would it take you folks to do this?
Oh, that's a time consuming, the job descriptions, it's very time-consuming.
Right.
Very time-consuming, yeah. And I think yours look, from what I've seen, they look very good as long as you can sign off on them, the supervisor and the employee all agree.
So all set?
But they were well done.
All right. Probably in the next go-around, we may want to look at that as having the job descriptions looked at at that point, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, folks, for coming this evening.
Well, thank you very much.
And there's nothing from the back, all right? And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Roll call?
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Bergeron?
Aye.
Counselor LaBranche?
Aye.
Counselor Posky?
Aye.
Counselor Minutelli?
Aye.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye. I said, one hour.
Thank you. If you have any questions, please call.